Okay, we good?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Meeting of the Board of Education.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin? Yes, yes.
Here.
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 Skirk.
Here.
Here.
Marion, is there an attachment for the hearing that they need to file?
I didn't know.
You did, yeah. Okay. Okay, give me a second, I suppose.
Or can I get some way?
Okay, I apologize for that little hiccup. We do have a quorum, so we do need to hold a public hearing for the budget prepared in tentative form as set forth in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education held on June 11. The tentative budget for District 208 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, was placed on file and was conveniently available at the district's administrative offices. All persons desiring to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. So Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Smetana, could I ask you both to present the budget?
Yes, Dr. Smetana, would you like to start?
Yes. Good evening. As Ms. Ayala said, the tentative budget was approved in June. It's been adjusted throughout July and August based off of prior year actuals and updates to support building level projects and initiatives. Included in the packet tonight is the final budget for fiscal year 2025 that I'm asking for the Board to approve tonight. The projected deficit is $1.2 million due to the solar panel project budgeted for $1.4 million. This deficit is offset from last year's unexpected surplus of roughly $1.1 million. And this surplus, again, was due to receiving additional revenue that was unexpected from interest on investment, food service reimbursement. We received a little extra in EBF, which is our state funding. And additionally, on the summary pages, so you can see, for example, on Board Book Page 9, I have updated this page as well as the following page. This page, I kept the working cash fund highlighted so you can see the bond presentation that you'll hear later tonight reflected in coming into working cash and then being transferred out of working cash. And then at the bottom of this page, you can see the operating fund balances that we expect at the end of this fiscal year. As always, we report out on two numbers. One with the $2.9 million in working cash that we have reserved for a field project, should that ever come to fruition. And so that is 58.93%. And if you remove that, since the goal is not to touch that $2.9 million unless we proceed with that project, the operating fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures is 53.95%. So that's basically saying if we receive no additional revenue the next year, we could operate for about half of our fiscal year, or six months. And then on the next page, just to note, I updated the historical revenue and expenditure analysis. And as you can see, as a refresher, most of our revenue comes from property tax, but that's only 78%. We really rely on state funding for 12%, other local revenue for 7%, and then federal funding makes up the other 3%. And then you can see that two different expenditure analysis as well. And we've been doing that for several years, so you can kind of track. These percentages stay relatively consistent from year to year. One might go up a percent or down, but for the most part, they're relatively consistent. As Ms. Ayala said, we've, you know, the tentative budget has been on display. We also published a notice in the paper for the public hearing tonight, and I would ask for the Board's approval tonight. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Smetana. Yes. The motion carries. I didn't see any questions submitted, but this is the time at the hearing for any Board Hearing is adjourned. We're going to move on to the regular meeting. members to comment. We do have FOIA requests this evening. I think you went into great detail at prior meetings regarding anticipated revenues,
Yes, we had multiple FOIA requests from the West Cook News, and then we had one
expenses, and changes year over year, you know, to emphasize what Dr. Smetana has said.
from Smart Perkure.
Our main funding source is property tax, which comes in twice a year.
We had one, two, three, four, five from West Cook News.
It's about 80% of our revenues, and the other 20% comes from state and federal sources.
They look like they're general FOIAs that went out to other school districts requesting, like, teachers that are retiring, contact info, school calendar, official enrollment
You said it much more detailed than that, but that's a summary. Any questions from the Board?
numbers, things like that.
Not seeing none.
So those responses are included in the Board's packet for this evening's meeting.
Do we have any questions or comments from the public regarding the proposed budget Any comments or questions on those?
I did not receive any pre-questions.
Moving on to visitor statements for this evening. I should also ask the student advisors specifically, I apologize. I think we do have visitors' comments tonight. Do you have any questions on the budget for this year? It's your first budget, probably your first step into this. Would you care to come up? I'm going to read a small statement. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the So hearing none, we're going to move forward, I think. business of the school district. Do you have a motion to move forward? There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Marina? Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, moves that the September 10, 2024, public hearing concerning the 2024-2025 budget be
Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue
adjourned.
Second. A second from Ms. Locke. during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should Is even all in favor? We do have a roll call, please. be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." Ms. Nardi?
Ms. Gasko?
Thank you. Yes. Please take a seat.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Ms. Locke?
My name is Yuli Hansen. I'm a resident, a mother, parent. I am very thankful for letting me to speak. I will be brief. My younger daughter, Kira Hansen Jr., at RB, represents our school in dual-degree program at Triton for the first time in the history of RB. While onboarding my student, Triton made me aware that other high schools participating in the same program are getting full financial support, giving full financial support to their students. All of the schools except RB. So I just wanted to bring this issue to your attention because I think that our students should be treated the same way as other students. I know I speak with an accent. I was born and raised in Moscow, Russia, so I just, and I'm very nervous, so I just wrote my speech for your convenience.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I hope you will make a right decision. There are two students, Dylan, his parents did not make it tonight, so just me. Thank you. This program allows students to get a degree in, either associate degree either in arts or science. Both of our students are aiming for associate degree in science, and at the same time to get a diploma, high school diploma.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for providing the written comment.
Thank you.
And I think I did email Ms. Hansen and said, because it doesn't apply to an individual student, we would discuss it in closed sessions, an individual student request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, any additional discussion items actually from our Board of Education members, things they'd like to discuss this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have approval of minutes. Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on August 13, 2024, open and close as presented in the September 10, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Can we have a second from Ms. Locke? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
Aye.
Carries? Moving on to old business, action items on life safety items, capital improvement, sustainability. Do we have anything new to report there? Final budget for FY '25. We had the hearing earlier this evening. Obviously, we've been very transparent about the budget process. Are there any more questions, or can we move ahead to the adoption?
Whereas the Board of Education of Township High School District Number 208, County of Cook, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least 30 days prior to the final action thereon. Whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 10th day of September 2024, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year of this school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. Section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adapted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year.
Can we have a second, please?
A second.
A second from Mr. Novak, and we do need a roll call.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Locke?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Dunhorse?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
And Ms. Ayala.
Yes. Budget is approved, and now we have a resolution, excuse me, regarding the general obligation bonds.
Dr. Smetana, Ms. Hennessy, would you like to come forward, please?
Sure. As Ms. Hennessy comes forward, I'd just like to remind the Board that the district is in the process of completing two capital projects, installing solar panels, and creating a second culinary lab to accommodate the growth in the program. While the district has a good tax base for its operating expenditures, there'd be a need to withdraw from the working cash fund, which is a reserve fund to complete growth projects, which is why we have recommended to the Board that we pursue these bonds. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Liz.
Thanks, Kristin. I did a little presentation, but I can summarize it if that's easier.
That'd be great, just a brief summary.
Because I think we've heard from Ms. Hennessy for the Board, we've also heard from Dr. Smetana, so I think we appreciate you coming back again.
Thank you. So tonight, you're approving, hopefully, a parameters bond resolution that authorizes the district to go forward with a $2 million issuance with no further Board action, but subject to certain parameters. So it's got a maximum interest rate, it's got a maximum payments on the levy, they're paid from the debt service extension base, and as you might recall from prior presentations, this allows the debt to decrease in a gradual manner as opposed to a big drop-off and then going back up. So it's a very smooth schedule. The debt's going to be paid off in two years. It's, again, $2 million for the commercial kitchen project. The district has gone through the requisite petition period and held a public hearing, and this resolution, the final interest rates will be subject to approval by the Board representatives, which are outlined in Section 8 of the ordinance, and that includes the Board President and Dr. Smetana. So we expect that to happen September 17. We're getting bids from banks. That seems to be the lower-cost path to do it non-rated with a bank placement. If those bids do not come in as expected, we will then move into the public markets with a bond rating and a bond sale, again, all authorized by this resolution that you're approving tonight. We expect to close on October 8, at which time you would get the bond proceeds. You also have a board meeting that night where you would move those bond proceeds from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund to be spent on the commercial kitchen project. Any questions?
Thank you very much for the summary and laying out the final dates here in this process. We've been talking about it for, I think, 10 months at this point. Ms. Roscoe, do you have a question or comment?
Very good. Okay. So our next step, Liz, was to read the resolution that's included on the agenda, or is that the same resolution that Marianne Deham? Okay.
Ready? "The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $2,505,000 general obligation limited tax bonds, Series 2024 of Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof."
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Locke, and we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Locke?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Dunhorse?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
And Ms. Ayala.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hennessy, for coming this evening and for all of your expertise on this process. And we look forward to talking to you next week sometime, week after next, right? Final end of, under old business, we have the solar panels RFP, excuse me. Dr. Smetana?
Good evening. The administration issued a RFP, or Request for Proposal for a Solar Panel Project, on June 26. On July 16, there was mandatory meeting for any vendor wishing to submit an RFP. The RFPs were due August 7. The district received eight proposals from the companies listed. As outlined in the RFP, each submitted proposal was evaluated using the following criteria: proposal, cost effectiveness, technical approach and implementation, proposer qualifications, and project experience, and then project team member experience. So from there, there were three companies that rose to the top, and we invited them to give a presentation to the administration, along with representatives from NNEA, as well as Nicholas and Associates, which is our construction manager. And then below, I provided a summary of the top three proposals. So you can see, going across the top three, were Altoff Industries, PSG Energy Group, and Verde Solutions. They were all similar in cost, with Verde Solutions being the cheapest. The system capacity was all roughly about the same as we had set requirements in the RFP for what the system needed to be able to do. The energy savings in year one, you can see Altoff and Verde were very similar. PSG Energy Group took a very conservative approach, and we asked them about that, and they said in their RFP, across the board, they take a conservative approach. And the warranties, that's where Verde really stood out. So the modules, which are the solar panels, you can see across the board, it's 25 years. Verde offered an extra five for 30 years. But the biggest difference was really with inverters. They typically come with a standard 10-year warranty, and you can see both Altoff and PSG were requiring, if we wanted to extend that, some additional money, whereas Verde Solutions automatically extends that warranty for an extra 10 years. Additionally, in Altoff and PSG proposal, at 10 years, you would have to replace the inverters, and that's not the case with Verde. The racking system warranty were all the same, and then the workmanship warranty, Verde also was higher in that as well. Optional operation and maintenance costs, you can see if we wanted them to come out in service and maintain them, you can see how the costs vary, and Verde's solution, again, is the lowest. Altoff was the only one that included a performance guarantee based off of whatever the energy savings are. They guarantee to a certain percent. If they don't meet that, then they would cut you a check, is really what a performance guarantee is. Both other companies said they would consider negotiating that into the contract. Verde Solutions did provide that. In their audits, they've always been within 1% of what their numbers are in the proposal. But again, that they would negotiate that into the contract if we wanted. Years payback, you can see Verde's a little over, it was about five years, Altoff is 5.4. And again, PSG Energy Group took a very conservative approach of six and a half years. And then Illinois School Experience, this is where, you know, you can see a little bit additional separation. Altoff Industries is not an exclusive solar company, and so they have very limited experience. They did one district, but was a ground mounting system, and then they maintained another ground mount system at a school district. They did not install it. PSG Energy Group has experience in four districts, several schools for some of those, for example, within the West Aurora School District. Verde Solutions has done College of Lake County, District 102 Lagrange, Cristory, St. Martin College Prep, and then they're currently installing solar panels at U of I Research Center and a private high school as well. Based off of the analysis above, I would recommend negotiating a contract with Verde Solutions. I did contact references on Verde Solutions, and they were all glowing. We had one school district that even said they started the process with another company and were having such a hard time, they went out to find other companies and went with Verde and had just an amazing experience with them.
Did you talk with Lagrange, since they're our next-door neighbors?
I spoke with the superintendent. The retired superintendent, who was active superintendent at the time they were installed, and they had no complaints and were happy.
Nice.
Also, something worthy of noting, but was not factored into our decision, I think, I hope it's clear, kind of that Verde stands out in terms of the winner. But when we asked them to come in and do a presentation, Verde brought their CEO, as well as Grace Rasmussen, who's a 2015 graduate of RB. For those of you who are familiar with her, she went to Purdue and has a degree in engineering, and she was a project manager who came to do the presentation and would be a project manager for the project. So that's something that's neat. And then there was a question submitted about the contract. It is a tight turnaround. We hope to be able to present it at the next board meeting and get approval. It's really going to depend on, you know, how responsive attorneys are on both sides. But we already have a contract, because part of the RFP was for each company to submit what their sample contract would look like. So I can send that off tomorrow if I have direction from the Board that that's the way we want to move.
So following on that same line of thinking, this would effectively be the first read, and we would approve the contract at the next board meeting, assuming the negotiations move smoothly. Is there any advice or thoughts on performance guarantees? Should they be considered as part of the contract, or is it not? Doesn't appear to be the industry standard, from what?
Correct. And there would be a cost associated with it, so I don't have an answer right now, because I don't know what the cost would be associated with that.
I was wondering if you had talked about it with Nicholas, and if they had a thought on it.
I think when we sat down with Nicholas and Nania to negotiate, I think similar to like how we did the bids with alternates, I think we asked Verde what would be their, you know, if we wanted a price guarantee. I mean, it's no different than when we did a construction manager. Construction manager is 3%. If you go construction manager at risk, where they hold all the liability, it went to 4% or, you know, I mean, so I'm assuming it's something that they're going to, you know, provide themselves with some additional coverage. But tonight, you're looking for the Board, more or less, to say all in favor to move forward with negotiating with Verde. Is that correct?
Correct. Okay. And Mr. Novak, you were involved in the discussion on this? Do you want to?
Yeah, I went to the sites, which was nice, with Nicholas and Dr. Skinkis. The three things I liked about Verde that I saw in the meeting was the warranty, the extended warranty we're going to get, the price, and the previous jobs that they worked at. So I definitely recommend we go with your recommendation.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I didn't see anything submitted directly on this.
The site aside, I realize I was looking at the five-year return, and that's because their cost is a little lower, so that makes sense. But it did, Verde stood out with the comparisons for capacity and return, and then obviously, as you said, the warranty. So it looked good to me.
Well, and certainly back to our first presentation, the cost was estimated to be higher than this, and the years' payback was higher as well.
Right.
One other thing of note, when I
Yeah, we're at 7, now we're at 5, so.
When I did follow-up questions with Verde, I asked them for data on their previous school projects in terms of, because this is a design build, so like what their budget was, and then what the project actually came in at. And I think all of them, but one came in at the exact price or maybe even just a tad lower. And the one that came in higher was because ComEd had them install another transformer, and based off of the size of our project, they don't foresee that happening. They don't even think that that's a possibility. So I think that was really reassuring to me that, you know, all of their past projects, they've hit their budget.
And during the meeting, we discussed that these were the panels that had the least amount of damage to the roof as well.
Correct.
So that's an also good point.
Yeah, PSG was saying that we might need anywhere from like 50 roof penetrations, whereas Verde said their system, they would do minimal if any at all.
Is it a proprietary system that Verde has, or are they just, their installation techniques differ?
I think it's an installation, and like they're all, like all of their products, there's kind of like tiers, right? And so they all are choosing different modules or panels, but they're all within the same tier. But they all, you know, have a slightly different approach to installing them. But they clearly, they noted that that was a concern of ours in the RFP, and so they were working really hard to come up with a design to prevent that from happening.
They also work well with Garland, which is our roof manufacturer.
Okay, so we don't have a formal vote on this this evening? We can do a, I don't hear any objections to asking the administration to move forward and bring back a contract for approval at our next meeting? Does anyone have any concerns about that approach?
No.
Okay. And thank you very much for all the work that's been done on this. I know it's been talked about for some time, and I'm glad to see it moving forward. Are you okay with that, Dr. Skinkis, leaving it as a?
Yep, that's perfect. Just enough so that we know that we have the straw pull of the Board to move forward.
Absolutely. Moving on to new business, we have payment of bills.
There were some questions submitted on bills.
Yep. So on page 280 is one of the, this one question is sprinkled throughout. The first time it comes up is page 280. So there were a couple of dental insurance refunds. Those are for retirees that are on our dental plan. Their payments come out of their IMRF pension, but IMRF updated their software in July, and when they did that, they overcharged them, and the only way to get them the money back is if we issue the refund.
So it's a refund from the prior year?
It was from July.
Okay.
So.
I just hadn't seen those before, so I wasn't sure what was, it was an IMRF issue.
Yeah.
Okay. That satisfies.
On page 287, there's a payment for heart spring, and it's a year's worth of rate adjustments. So heart spring last year could not bill us more than the previous year until the state approves the rate change, and that took almost a whole year with the site. And so when the rate then got approved, we had to back pay them that money.
Was this previously budgeted?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Page 295, Jack Phelan, minibus keys, those are duplicate keys to have on hand. The new minibuses come with two sets of keys. It's operationally better if we have three. So we made another key for each bus. Page 301, payment to Ricky McDonald for football announcing. Yes, we pay for football announcing. We pay for other sports as well that have announcers. And we've been doing that since my time at RB.
It's a contractual rate.
Correct.
Yeah, the dollar amount itself wasn't
Right.
Anything out of the ordinary. I just remember seeing it.
And then last was page 302, Metro Garage. We do lease the driver's ed cars. We switched dealerships this past spring because Ford doesn't make sedans anymore, and we needed to update the cars, and SUVs were too expensive. And so we did switch to
So it's a refund from the prior year?
It was from July.
Okay.
So.
I just hadn't seen those before, so I wasn't sure what was.
Yeah.
It was an IMRF issue.
Correct.
Okay, that satisfies.
On page 287, there's a payment for Hartspring, and it's a year's worth of rate adjustments. So Hartspring last year could not bill us more than the previous year until the state approves the rate change, and that took almost a whole year with the site, and so when the rate then got approved, we had to, we have to back pay them that money.
Was this previously budgeted?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Page 295, Jack Phelan, minibus keys, those are duplicate keys to have on hand. The new minibuses come with two sets of keys. It's operationally better if we have three. So we made another key for each bus. Page 301, payment to Ricky McDonald for football announcing. Yes, we paid for football announcing, we pay for other sports as well that have announcers. And we've been doing that since my time at RB.
It's a contractual, right?
Correct.
Yeah, the dollar amount itself wasn't-
Right.
Anything out of the ordinary, I just remember seeing it.
And then last was page 302, Metro Garage. We do lease the driver's ed cars. We switched dealerships this past spring because Ford doesn't make sedans anymore, and we needed to update the cars, and SUVs were too expensive. And so we did switch to Chevrolet, and we are leasing them through, the Malibus through them. However, that's not what this is. Metro Garage, we had a zoo patron hit, one of our new parked driver's ed cars sitting in our lot.
The weekend before we used them.
Correct, yeah. It had 50 miles on it, and we had not driven them.
Five zero miles.
Yes, 50. And it was just sitting in our, in our parking lot, and so we had to pay Metro Garage because the district received the insurance money from that person's company that hit our car.
Okay, so it was segregated and it's all washed.
And so it's just coming in and out, but we had to pay Metro Garage because we had to accept the insurance payment.
Okay, I think Ms. Locke and I both noticed that one going.
Yes. And those were all the questions on the bills tonight.
Okay. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the September 10, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Novak?
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Flack?
Yes.
And Ms. Sylas?
Yes. We have a new Press Plus policy issue, 116.
This is a first read. I will convene the Policy Council to review this sometime in September, early October. It is not expected to be finalized, we do not have to have it finalized until before the 1st of the year. There also is some disputes going on with the Title IX at the federal level in the policies that are in here. So I'm not in a rush to convene the group, but I will make sure we get this to the Board. I would say before the cow of October. I would think that gives us plenty of time to meet.
Were these mainly, I think, 1125 effective dates? I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said before the start of the year.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so first read, questions should be submitted.
I'll leave them in there. If anybody has questions, please submit, and then I will convene the Policy Council.
Very good. And then we have the approval of Township Treasurer appointment.
There was a question submitted on this.
Township Treasurer appointments representative, I guess.
Dr. Smetana, do you have the question I forwarded to you?
Yes, I do. So as we discussed at the previous meeting, this, the school board has until October 8 of 2024 to appoint either a school board member or an administrator to serve as the two-year term as a trustee for the proviso township treasurer, trustee of schools, is what it's called. And so I presented in the board packet some of the benefits that the Township Treasurer provides to us, as well as our return on investment over the year, over this past year. And one of the main benefits is cost sharing. We save on financial software, banking structure costs, purchasing certi-bond, which is required, and then also, we would have to hire an additional staff member to fulfill the responsibilities that are currently completed by the Township Treasurer. So I put in the analysis that, you know, last year, obviously, the market was good for investments, and so the district made $981,866 from interest, and then the cost participating in the Township Treasurer was $80,000 roughly. So we resulted in a profit of around $900,000. That's not saying that if we left the Township Treasurer, that it would cost us $900,000, right? But we would have to hire a new staff member, and we'd have to pay someone to, we'd have to pay a third party to do our investments, we'd have to pay for the software. So there was a question submitted about getting the itemized cost of their list of services, so I've requested that. I haven't gotten it back yet, so I can pass that along once I receive it. And then I also understand that one of the questions was, would we be receiving additional reporting? So now that I'm a part, assuming that the Board chooses to appoint me tonight, I'll be a part of the quarterly board meetings, and then I can report out after each board meeting to this Board to provide an update, and then hopefully, if you have concerns at that point, I can take them back and continue to address them with the Township Treasurer.
I would think by having all school districts from, the Board asked me to poll superintendents, and it appears that most, if not all, are doing a school administrator on the Township Board, just so that makes sense. If they don't have a CFO like we do in Dr. Smetana, or an assistant superintendent of that nature, some of the smaller, single school districts have like a superintendent and a bookkeeper, so the superintendent may serve as the administrator instead of the bookkeeper, just so that there's an administrator on the Board.
No, I think, I think it makes great sense for Dr. Smetana to be our representative. I think it's important for the Board to keep in mind where this legislation came from, right? The idea is, there's not historically been a lot of transparency, I think, around Township Treasurer's offices. I know with the Finance Group, I had asked some questions, and I then spent some time on their website. They have a, you know, their investment policy is, to Dr. Smetana's point, statutory, but they do have an investment policy statement that I think is really robust, and it goes through how they triage various investment options for the districts. I think that's worth looking at. I was favorably impressed by the minutes I went through. I think the current treasurer is clearly very professional and moving this forward. I just think with this opportunity from the state legislature and with Dr. Smetana's new attendance, a little bit more knowledge might be helpful for everyone. You know, we're used to seeing what our investment returns are, let's really understand, you know, where the other districts are in this, because if some districts do pull out ultimately of the Township Office, that will impact us.
That's correct.
Correct.
This is definitely a 180 turn, so definitely a good change from the Township Office, and a lot more transparency, and I think even more service, and because years pass.
We had some, my first few years in the district, we had some bad years. Some of our board members, I mean, they used to come once a year to present their audit and overall financial statements, and then they refused to come because of some of the way our board members were questioning them. I think you're 100% right, it's 180 in regards to that, our return on investment, the communication, the satisfaction, where it's not like we're pulling teeth to get reports or information.
Yeah, it used to be run by someone that had been there for a very, very long time and continued to do things the way that they had always done them. And Paul has been there, I believe this is his sixth year, and has really turned things around a lot. So certainly, you know, there are areas of improvement, but I think we've come a long way since he's taken over the Township Treasurer. And then one thing I'll note, too, you know, certainly it could impact us if schools leave. I don't know how realistic this is, but the new public act does allow for other school districts to join into the Township Treasurer, which hasn't been an option before. So, you know, we could pursue smaller districts to join should other districts leave if the Township Treasurer decided that that was the direction they wanted to go in.
But correct me if I'm wrong, everyone, every district in Cook County needs to be affiliated at this point, with the exception of LT.
Correct. You have until October to get, appoint somebody to the Board.
Gotcha.
And then that's for the two years where I think terms are finishing up, and then you.
No, no, my question is other districts.
Even if you wanted to leave. Yes, all districts that are part of a Township, that are part of a Treasurer's office have till October to appoint.
Understood, okay. And, I mean, you know, when we talked about it, I just think they have a long list of TTO services, you know, kind of building that out a little bit and understanding it, I think would be helpful for us to understand that value. So thank you, and I fully support you being our representative.
So we do need a motion tonight.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the appointment of Dr. Kristin Smetana, appointee, presently serving as an employee of this Board assigned to the position of Assistant Superintendent as trustee of schools for Riverside Brookfield Township High School District Number 208, to serve with the proviso Township trustees of schools as presented in the September 10, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
A second from Mr. Van Horst, okay. I wasn't sure who had spoken down there, I apologize. We get a roll call?
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Flack?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Ms. Sylas?
Yes. Do we have anyone wishing to comment? Second visitor's opportunities? No. Seeing none, we did not have any discussion items requested. Do we have anything from the Board about consideration of items for future meetings? No, seeing none. Matters for closed session, we do have appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the September 10, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke, and we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Sylas?
Yes.
Ms. Flack?